Good evening, I'd like to call to all the order, the Watcom County Council meeting for October 22nd, 2019, which by the way is my wedding anniversary. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner. Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Tyler Bird.
Here.
Todd Donovan.
Here.
Carol Frazi.
Here.
Sat Paul Sidoo.
Here.
All like to rise and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, a couple announcements, first I wanted to give a shout out for the kids from Cross Train, where are you? Ah, good budding elected officials, welcome. Hope we don't put you off. First off, a couple of announcements, please turn off your cell phones and if you'll be handing out paperwork to council members, please give one copy to the clerk for office files down here. First up is a set of minutes, there's four of them, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Let's do Donovan, Ms. Brenner, seconds, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 7-0. Next item up is a special presentation, AB 2019-524, Executive Lyles will read a proclamation for the 75th anniversary of Watcom County Library System.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it's good to be here tonight to recognize and thank the work of the Watcom County Library System. Tonight I'd like to acknowledge the Watcom County Library System as they mark their 75 year anniversary. We're very fortunate to have a robust network of libraries serving our small cities and rural communities throughout Watcom County. A person who I consider to be relatively smart, Albert Einstein, once said, "The only thing you absolutely have to know is the location of the library." And I think that there's a lot of truth to that. Our rural libraries are instrumental in connecting people, sharing information and providing resources to areas that would otherwise have limited access to books and to technology. I'd like to acknowledge in attendance tonight Christine Perktons, the Executive Director for the Watcom County Library System. Christine, would you please come forward? If the Chair allows, I'm going to give Christine the opportunity to speak after I read the proclamation. But Christine, we're very appreciative of the hard work that you and the library system staff and volunteers put into our community. I've issued the proclamation declaring November 7th, 2019, as the Watcom County Library System Day, and I'd like to read that proclamation to you now. Whereas November 7th, 2019, marks the 75th anniversary of the formation of the Watcom County Library System by local citizens, who understood public libraries would strengthen rural Watcom County by sharing information to promote understanding, stories to cultivate empathy, and presence to support a community. And whereas, the Watcom County Library System is a leader in enabling economic prosperity and personal well-being within the county's diverse communities by providing free, convenient, and equitable access to a wide-ranging collection of books, technology, events, and digital services online at the 10 library branches, the Bookmobile, the Library Express locations. And whereas, Watcom County Library System champions community members' rights to access information privately and serves as a sanctuary for curiosity, thinking, and free exchange of ideas. And whereas, through collaborations with the public and academic libraries and other partners, Watcom County Library System inspires lifelong learning through discovery, inquiry, and reading for pleasure, especially for children. And whereas, over the past 75 years, Watcom County Library System staff and volunteers have created programs and environments that foster an engaged community where curiosity is cultivated, literacy flourishes, and democratic ideals thrive. Now therefore do I, Jack Lyles, Watcom County Executive, hereby proclaim November 7th, 2019, Watcom County Library System Day in Watcom County. And I encourage all citizens to join me in congratulating the Watcom County Library System on its 75th anniversary of service to our county, and invite citizens to participate in special activities at all county libraries on November 7th, 2019. Christine, please come to the podium, we'd like to hear from you. And again, I really appreciate all of the work of the Watcom County Library System. My first engagements were on the city council in Linden in the early 1990s, had the opportunity to dedicate a building in Linden, the Art Henkin Building, which now houses the Watcom County Library in Linden. I know that Ferndale, Maple Falls, Point Roberts, and so on and so forth, that you've done a lot of good work over the years, so congratulations on the work that you're doing.
Thank you. I just want to recognize that we have council, a library board of trustee here today, Lori Jump is in the audience, and she's from the Meridian area. And we also have our, small selection of our wonderful library staff here cheering us on for our 75th anniversary. I'm so excited to see a bunch of children and families in the audience today because I thought it's a great time for a really quick local history lesson. As you heard, on November 7th, 1944, that's the exact same day that Franklin Delano Roosevelt was elected to his fourth term as our US President. The citizens across Watcom County voted more than two to one to pass the formation of our library district. It was led by a motivated group of representing several county granges, so predominantly farmers, who really felt strongly in the importance of having public library services available to rural communities. And right away, they went to work and purchased a bookmobile. We had seven routes originally, and they had stops in places like the Lummi Day School, Point Whitehorn, High Notes Corner, Clipper, the Chocanut Gravel Pit, and Aggett Bay. So those are some of the more unique places that we visited. One by one, over the years, cities across Watcom County, such as Linden, annexed into the library district. We began serving the county hospital in 1954. We expanded our outreach to nursing homes in 1966, and to the county jail in 1971. We built our administrative services building on Northwest Drive near Smith in 1972. We are an independent taxing district, so although our name has Watcom County in it, we are independent of county government, although we do greatly appreciate our colleagues over in the assessors department, as well as the finance department, because our finances run through the county, so thank you for your efforts there. And we also greatly appreciate our county executive and council for approving our board of trustees. We have such a great board right now, and we're poised and ready to do fabulous things. You know, a lot of times people think of the library as a place for books and materials, and certainly we have over 380,000 items for people to borrow. We checked out over 2 million of them last year. Our citizens in Watcom County love and use their libraries. But we're also a place where neighbors meet their neighbors and gather and work on community issues. We host events and learning opportunities. In fact, we've got a renowned mountain climber, Leif Whitaker, coming this month and next month to talk about his two-time summiting Mount Everest. He's speaking at many county libraries, I hope to see you at some of those events, they're really fun. I also really believe that the library's a place that inspires and encourages creativity and working with people of all ages, from the very youngest, to teens, to adults and seniors. As Executive Lyles mentioned, we're hosting 75th anniversary celebrations in all 10 of our county library locations on November 7th, so all of you are welcome to come and join us for those. And our colleagues at Watcom County Government are also invited to a special event celebrating the 75 library champions who have really made a difference in our library system's history, and we'll hope you'll come and help us congratulate those people and thank them, and learn about how we're going to take on the next 75 years. So, thank you all very much, appreciate your time and support.
Right. Easy there. All right, so next up is several, we're having several public hearings, the first group of public hearings will be on the specific topics, and if you wish to speak on the topic, you're welcome to. If you wish to speak on a different topic, please wait for the open public session. Audience members who wish to address the council during the public hearing are asked to sign up at the back of the room prior to the meeting. The council chair will ask those who sign up to form a line at the podiums. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record, and optionally include city of residence. Speakers will be given three minutes to address. The council, council staff will keep track of time limits and inform speakers when they have 30 seconds left to conclude comments. When a large group of individuals supports the same position on issue, the selection of one or two representatives to speak on behalf of the entire group is encouraged. And when using the microphone, please speak close enough that you can hear yourself on the speakers, as this will ensure that everybody else can hear your comments as well. And first item up is an ordinance, AB 2019-489, establishing the Affordable Housing Supporting, Affordable and Supportive Housing Fund. Do we have a staff report? No staff report? And then with that, I will open the public hearing. And I have no one signed up for this issue, does anybody wish to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, what's the wish of the council?
You would prefer...
Mr. Donovan barely makes it, as I'm first, and I'll take yours as a second. Any discussion? Mr. Donovan.
I just, this is a great opportunity that the legislature gave us to retain some local sales tax money for affordable housing, so looking forward to seeing what we can do with this.
Anybody else? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan. Carol Frazi.
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo.
Yes.
That passes 7-0. Next item up is AB 2019-495, Ordinance Reauthorizing the Golf Cart Zone on Certain Rides in Birch Bay. Is there a staff report on this? Mr. Rutan.
Good evening, Joe Rutan with Public Works. Eighteen months ago, this ordinance was passed with an 18-month limit, so we brought it back in front of you. Public Works is not recommending any changes. We did include in the packet all the correspondence and comments that we received in the office, but we are not proposing any changes to the ordinance. There were also no reported accidents during that 18 months.
Good, okay. Questions for staff, Mr. Bird?
Joe.
Joe. Not so quick.
So close, so close, no. No accidents, were there, was there anything, any accident, well, no accidents, tickets, like speeding?
That's a good question. Accidents reported. I cannot tell you what the sheriff encountered out there as far as enforcement issues, but we were not made aware.
Okay. Anything in regards to, that you're aware of when it comes to like congestion or impacts on traffic, or?
There certainly is, as you remember from the time of the passing of the ordinance, there's certainly... That has changed over the past 18 months.
That's fair, that's fair, thanks.
Was there any other staff report? No, I thought someone else was stepping up. Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. If there's anybody wishes, I have Jeffrey Schammel, Kathy Cleveland, and Billy Brown.
Kathy, could you pull that microphone?
The state's been given permission for golf courts abused in certain committees, that doesn't mean that we have to do so just because it's been approved. It's in the best interest of Birch Bay to not do so, here's the reasons, I think, and they're all safety issues. Number one, there are golf courts driving around with no license plates on them, so if they hit property, or they hit your car, there is no way to be accountable, especially if they do a count, kid and run. So I believe that that's one thing that should be changed, if you're going to allow this. Also, many of them are not street legal, they do not have license, lights in the front, nor license in the backs, nor turn signals. And if you have a motorcycle, that's a dirt bike, they're required to have all that stuff, so why can golf carts drive with that? You know, so we have, already have enough traffic on Birch Bay not complying with the rules, we really do not need golf courts running around not complying with the rules also. Also, on April, and I'm not out there guarding stuff, on April 12th, 2019, at 10:30, oh 2:00 PM, in the, a dark evening, because the clouds were covered, it was high, a golf cart went zooming right on by me, going the other way, with no lights at all, and I thought, wow, and I looked over, no taillights either, pitch dark. So this is the kind of, you know, we have a society that's recalcitrant, that's not want to buy the, be the rules, and we do not need to allow more of this. More grievously, is the children riding on the back of the golf courts. I saw four adorable little girls, I've seen more than that since, in the back, no seat belts, and people that drive need to take physics, because it stops quickly, who goes flying out, the kids right onto the street. And that's just a huge, huge danger issue, and so I just think, you know, it's just not a good idea. And it's, golf courts belong, on a golf course for a reason, and they belong, or in a gated community that's for, you know, like a country club. So therefore, I respectfully ask every member to deny further use of golf courses on Birch Bay Drive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Hi, I'm Billy Brown, I'm Vice President of Birch Bay Chamber of Commerce. I'm always saying this because I'd like you to understand how many people I talk to. Blaine Birch Bay Parking Rec Commissioner, I have a business, I've lived there for three decades. The question that you asked, Tyler, I, Mr. Elfo was at one of our chamber lunches about a month ago, and I stood up and I said, "Mr. Elfo, I'd like your unbiased opinion about the golf cart zone." And he said, "Not one incident, other than a few minor things," like, I can't even remember what it was, like, he compared it to other things that go on with bicycles and everything else. Not one ticket, nothing, in 18 months. Now, in the three decades that I've lived in Birch Bay, being a businessman and doing what I do, I've made this in the last 18 months, kind of a little hobby of mine, to talk, to bring this conversation up every chance I can with people. We've had nine or 10 major events from them, as you know, the Chamber of Commerce runs these, more than 100,000 people have attended these events. Birch Bay's about 10,000 people in, all year round, about double that in the summertime. I have yet to talk to someone that had a positive opinion of this and has changed their mind. Sure, there's people who would rather not have that. It's been a great thing for our little community. I own a golf cart, I've been on Birch Bay Drive a bunch of times. Matter of fact, I'm in newspaper right now, about this issue right now, talking about this meeting tonight. And if anybody was, wanted to oppose this, it was in, this newspaper's mailed to every home in a 98230 zip code, thousands of homes, nobody's here. The reason why is because it is a positive thing for our community, it's good for our environment, it's good for the parking issues in Birch Bay. You can park two golf carts in one parking place. I will admit that I was surprised 18 months later, after two summers, and all this gone on in Birch Bay, that we haven't had an issue. I expected one or two, but none? Anyway, the Birch Bay Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and the vast majority of our members, support this. The vast majority of the people that I've talked to, support this. So, I really appreciate the opportunity that you've given us for the last 18 months, and I think we've done a good job. We've educated our community. We have a new business in Birch Bay that ruins golf carts, in case you didn't know that. Okay, well anyway, I would appreciate your support on this, it's good for our community, and it's good for tourism, thank you.
Billy, can I, can I have that newspaper? Thanks.
Over Jeffrey Schammel?
Yes.
Yeah, you're next. And then, if there's anybody else wishes to speak on this issue, please line up.
Yeah, thank you for letting me speak, I'm Jeff Scammell. A lot of you might know me, I owned a little Seahawk truck, little semi you see in the parades, I go to all the events.
Yes.
I now have what you call the loner hawk. I took a little Cushman pickup golf cart, and I Seahawked it, and I loan it to everywhere I put a, I go to these events. The only negative I've heard so far about golf carts is like this lady here that spoke, and I agree with her, but what this lady is failing to tell you, is there's already laws. The golf cart has to have lights, it has to have brake lights, it has to have taillights, it has to have seat belts. So, if there's something wrong, instead of grumbling and crying that we need to outlaw everybody, call the sheriff. We have a great sheriff in Birch Bay, Bill Elfo has done us a wonderful job. If there's something unsafe, call the police, and they will get rid of those. We have bicycles in Birch Bay, not all of them are legal, but it's not up to condemning every bicycle on the county, because you decided not to license yours, or you decided to make yours unsafe. A gentleman got run over in Blaine, riding a bicycle in the middle of the night, he took all his reflectors off, and then he drove into traffic. Whose fault is that? Mine? Mine has lights, mine has reflectors. My golf cart, speeding, I get to go almost 10 miles an hour, oh boy, this is great. As brave as I am, if I see you coming up behind me in your car, and there's nobody in the, in the bike lane, I move over, and I let you go by. Everybody does. There's been no incidences. The only time you get stuck behind me, is if somebody's in the bike path coming my way, and as soon as I get by them, I pull over, and they have the right of way. Golf carts have done no damage to Birch Bay. People want to complain about coal and all of the damage of all this fossil fuels, what's wrong with the electric? We're doing good. I, I'm enjoying mine, everybody else has enjoyed theirs. The negative people, if there's something you don't like, call the police.
30 seconds, please.
We have a really good police force. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Patrick Alase, 4825 Alderson Road, Birch Bay. A long time ago, when this golf cart came, thing came to you, I told you I was neutral as far as golf carts are concerned. I still am, but, one of my concerns always has been keeping those bike lanes open. The golf carts too often wind up in the bike lanes. Part of it is, their top speed seems to be like 19 miles an hour, so they pull over for cars. Of course, you're looking at the guy who said to you years ago, and even less than years ago, the birch, the speed along Birch Bay Drive during the summertime should be 20 miles an hour. I wasn't listening to then, you know, that's okay, but it should be 20 miles an hour. The side streets at Birch Bay, oh, I mentioned this when you were looking at the golf cart thing, because Morrison Avenue was 20 miles an hour, and it moved to 25. I said, "All the side streets at Birch Bay should be 20 miles an hour." No, it's 25, Morrison Avenue's 25. I have neighbors that are complaining bitterly about people speeding on the side streets. Now, most people, 95% of the people do a good job of driving, but we do have a few people that are basically, well, hellions on wheels, and it causes problems. And golf carts, gee, I'd love to have people walking, they'd eat more candy that way, or biking, they'd eat more candy that way. I still feel neutral on the golf carts, but, the speed limit should be 20. Yes, I've seen golf carts in the bike lanes. I hope I haven't seen people drinking in golf carts, but it'd be easier to see them drinking in golf carts and in cars, I must admit that. Good luck with this, but I think, go for 20. You know, two weeks ago, when I said, or was it the bicycle committee meeting I brought it to, people that had been complaining about speeding on the side streets of Birch Bay. And they, they think of all sorts of weird things. You know, when government doesn't work, people's minds go all over the place, they want speed bumps, somebody wanted to have a radar gun, somebody was talking about getting out there with a hairdryer, make it look like a hair, radar gun. Now, I didn't mention that I have use of a hair, of, oh, the hair gun, and a radar gun, but for a person standing out there to shoot, see for somebody speeding, you don't need that, you can tell they're speeding, when you have to drive through it or walk through it. Well, good luck with all this.
I just have to say, for people who don't know, he's really into candy, because he owns the C-Shop.
That's right.
Great candy.
Bird knows calories up.
Great candy.
And I won't tell you that I brought, I brought chocolate tonight for you that you can play with, I didn't let it, you can get it later.
Dark? Okay.
Dark and light.
You need a, you need a golf cart, I think that would be good for you.
I'm giving it to you because it has a pull date on it, and the pull date is before the C-Shop opens, so just use it before then.
Patrick.
Patrick.
Ms. Cleveland, Ms. Cleveland, I'm sorry, everybody gets to speak once.
Not him, two statements ago, saying that they're just...
He, yeah, but you've already, he's, everybody's got...
I spoke too long?
No.
Kathy.
Just, for the, for the, for the purpose of everybody to understand, the rules of the council hours, everybody gets to speak on each issue once. So unfortunately, if someone says something and you want to rebut it, you don't have the opportunity to do so in the, in the particular session. I can leave now?
But, no, Patrick, my question was, when they're in the bike lane, are they parking in the bike lane, or are they driving?
The classic is, I'm driving north on Birch Bay Drive, there's a golf cart over here, there's people walking in the walking lane, there's a car there that wants to pass, the golf cart pulls over right in front of the people. The people, everybody was sort of like shocked, the people went up the hill to get, get out of the lane, yeah.
If you want to email comments in to the council, you can do that, or you can give us a call as well, individually.
Can you let me leave now? No.
Leave now.
Okay.
But don't leave, leave.
She wants the chocolate.
Well, I still got my own, but his is second to mine.
So I just want to take the opportunity to leverage off of what Mr. Bird said, irrespective of your opportunity to speak, you are of course always welcome to send us comments or to call any of us, or all of us, as you see fit, that's your, that's your right as constituents. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the open public session, what's the will of the council?
Bit of approval.
A second.
Mr. Per, well, he's, he's won a couple times, so it's your turn.
That's true, but I have some questions too.
Ms. Brenner.
Joe, can you come back down? I totally support, you know, golf carts wherever we can have them, but what about, you know, I mean, there are rules about those golf carts, and what about, and they've got their own deputy in the area, why is there a problem as much as there is, or if there is, I don't know, but why would, it seems like, I hope the tickets are expensive, and maybe they would just stop doing it. How expensive are the tickets?
I'm unaware.
Well, maybe we should have the sheriff come in here and we can work with him on that, but, because I really do agree with the issues that Kathy brought up, that those should not be allowed, so...
The rules regarding this are on page 254 of the packet, if you wanted to review those.
So I, I was surprised to hear that.
In this article, one of our deputies is quoted... In this article, one of our deputies is quoted as saying that he thinks it should actually be expanded by a couple of blocks and a couple of spots so that it includes a couple of the major campground entrances that are out there. Is that in?
Certainly, that is. I don't know the specific comment you're talking about. We can certainly look at that. I know that some of the campground, we go down to the campground. And then the campground itself has entrances off the road. But we don't control the road at that point when it's in the state park.
Further discussion. And to Mr. Retan's point on to page 254, it does make it clear that the golf carts must be equipped with lights and reflectors and seat belts. So if someone is operating them without that, then they are breaking the law by definition.
Well, that's, that's true. It's in there, yes. I just am surprised because there's a deputy, you know, there's a neighborhood deputy. And I hope they're, I'm going to put this in my committee so the sheriff's deputy can come and talk to us about what we can do to make, you know, to help keep the infractions low.
Further discussion. Seeing none with the clerk, please call the roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan? Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Sut Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
I pass a 7-0. Next item up is a resolution, AB 2019, amending Watcom County Code 100.7 Birch Bay Watershed Aquatic Resources Management District funding mechanism by adding an exemption for the Birch Bay Water and Sewer District. In this case, the council is acting as the Watcom County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. Is there a staff report on this?
Craig Olusen, Watcom County Public Works. I don't really have a staff report. This is, just a reminder, this is associated with the interlocal agreement that you guys discussed and passed last week. So again, it's kind of part of that process. So this is phase two.
Thank you. Any further staff information with that? I will open the public session.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. And the only person I have signed up is Kathy Cleveland. All right. Is there anybody else who wish, did you wish to speak on this issue?
I think she does.
Does anybody else wish to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the open public session. And with that, what's the will of the council?
I will, second.
Donovan, Mr. Per, Ms. Brenner, seconds. Discussion. Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan? Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Sut Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes. I pass a 7-0. Next item up is AB 2019 504, Resolution Adopting the 2020 Annual Road Construction Program. Is there a staff report on this? Mr. Retan again.
Again, Joe Retan with Public Works. This is identical to the first year of the six-year program that was passed at the last council meeting. There's two things I traditionally do when I come in front of you for the annual construction program. First is to apologize for the horrible form. It does not reproduce well. This is what all the counties have to use statewide. And I apologize for that. The second is, the most important column on here to pay attention to is the county force column, which is column 14. I'm looking at page 264. County forces, capital, this is capital construction work. And we contract out capital construction work.
What page did you say?
I'm sorry, 264. So once again, this is capital construction work. And we contract out capital construction work. The state allows us to do a certain amount of work with our own forces. That is what county force work is. So you can see there's certain projects that I have requested county forces. That does not mean that we would use county forces. That allows us to use county forces. So unanticipated site improvements, that if we have another road blowout like Graveline Road, that's where we use our county forces to do that capital construction work. Beyond that, once again, this is identical to the first year of the six-year program.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yeah, one other thing I think maybe you should clarify, especially for some of our newer council members, that the bar for amending this after it's passed is very, very, very high.
Thank you. To amend the annual construction program requires a unanimous vote of the council. To amend the six-year transportation program just requires unanimous vote. But this annual does require, we use this to build the budget. So to amend this does require a unanimous vote. Thank you for bringing that up.
Mr. Buchanan, sorry, Ms. Brenner was next. Then Mr. Donovan?
I noticed there's some of these that are kind of in the same area, but I don't see how you could get it all done in a year. So some of these, the annual road program is expected to go into year 2, 3, 4?
Yes, this is any money that we spend on a project, whether it be in preliminary engineering, right of way, or construction. So yes, you will see projects on the annual construction program that really are in design. We're spending capital money, but they're not going to construction yet. You can see the projects that go to construction because they're listed under contract or county force.
Well, then my little request, polite request, would be that you don't close off anybody's area so they can't get out. I mean, it looks like if you really were working on all these in one year, even just starting them, that it could cause real problems.
We take great pride in not only coordinating our work amongst ourselves with our maintenance group, because there's maintenance work, there's the flood group, there's our stormwater group, but also with the cities, the state and other entities out there, the tribes, you know, making sure that our projects coordinate well together. It's something that's expected of us. Yeah.
Mrs. Donovan?
So we approve the six-year transportation improvement plan every year, essentially.
Every year.
And then this is the annual implementation of the most recent six-year tip.
Take the first year of the six-year program and we place it on this form, which flushes out the financing a little bit more. Diggs into some of the grants finances.
We already did the six-year tip just recently.
So we're not proposing any changes to that first year.
So I just want to be clear on the process. So you're saying it's a majority vote to approve the six-year tip?
The majority vote to approve this annual.
Right.
To amend the annual.
Unanimous vote.
To amend it.
Which is why we try to build a little bit of flexibility in here. I've been in front of you to amend annual construction programs before, but it puts you in a bind to try to get a unanimous vote.
On the same threshold as the council changing the charter? Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed.
We didn't have the public hearing.
This was a hearing, wasn't there? Supposed to be people come talk.
My apologies. Is there, we now have an open public hearing on this? Is there anybody wishes to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the open public hearing. And what's the wish of the council?
Second.
Second, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. I pass a 7-0. Next item up is the open session. And during the open session, audience members can speak to the council on any issue not scheduled for a public hearing. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record and optionally include city of residence. Speakers will be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of time limits and inform speakers when they have 30 seconds left to conclude comments. Please line up at the podiums. And I'd ask that one person speak and then the next person be ready to speak when they're done, and we alternate back and forth. Ms. Cleveland?
Yes, I doubt I'll be back in council before the end of this session or the end of your term. So I came here, I wanted to public acknowledge Barbara Brenner's service. I know you're embarrassed. I've known her for well over 15 years. She has been excellent. By the way, my dad says he really appreciates you and appreciates your integrity. And my dad and I have been here on different issues, so. And Barbara reads her whole 400, 400 and some odd pages and whatever, and I know some of you guys don't. And I, and she is prepared. She always answers her phone. I'm amazed. There's times when I've forgotten on Friday to call during the hours. And I call after hours on Friday. I think I'll hear from her on Monday. And hello, and behold, I hear from her Friday night and over the weekend. She's prompt, she gets back to you. She helps you with your issues, even if she doesn't agree with what you're going to argue, or she thinks what you're arguing is stupid, or you don't have a leg to stand on, she will help you. And last time I had to call the person in my area, didn't respond, so I had to call Barbara Brenner again because she answered her phone about the last time I was going to be before county council. So I just want to say that she's a gem. She's served her county very well, and she served her constituents very well and very neutral. Like she's just, she's just there for you in so many different ways. And so I just wanted to say thank you. Public Works.
You know, I saw you with the flowers. I thought they were for the director of Public Works sitting back there. Thank you, Kathy. Well, we are going to have that sheriff's deputy come talk about what you brought up. I'll call you.
I don't like you even though you voted against you.
Mark Walker, Lake Samish. I'm here to talk about Lake Samish. I don't want the council to get distracted. The wakeboard boats are moved out to 300 feet on Lake Samish. That's where they are at Lake Watcom. I don't even know why we're talking about wakeboard boats anymore because they're out to 300 feet. It doesn't matter about erosion or dock damage. We moved them out to 300 feet. We only should be talking about ski boats now at 150 feet. And I think you're going to read your report and you're going to see the ski boats put out about a 14-inch wave. So I was wondering why anybody was still arguing against this until I saw the map. I saw you guys kind of with a map. And then I got the map. And the map really pisses me off. I don't know if I can say that in front of council. But this is the map of where the buoys used to be, where the compromise puts them, and where they ended up. 2,700 feet. I mean, who, we've never talked about 2,700 feet. That's outrageous. I mean, these people have created their own half mile of latuary, you know, to the detriment of everybody else on the lake. We all got to jam into the middle of the lake now for this small group of people to have their half mile of latuary. That should make you mad. It makes me mad. I know you guys didn't see this before you voted on it. I know you didn't have the coordinates, and I know you didn't have a map. So this should upset you. I mean, this is wrong, to have a half a mile of lake that nobody else can use. So I'm hoping that you guys will look at that, that you'll see that this is a good compromise. Councilmember Sedu had said, you know, 900, 300, 300, 300 for the boundary. This right here, the compromise, has got dock, 300 feet, 300 feet, and dock. It's really close to your 900 feet. Compromises are compromises, and I know people want to negotiate a compromise, but this has been a compromise through the whole group of the people around the lake. And we really don't, hope you don't want to keep negotiating. And let's just look at the ski boats. Look at the reports you got. The 150 feet, you'll see a ski boat puts out a 14-inch wave. That wave is going to dissipate really quickly. The sheriff said, hey, we can't enforce it no matter what number you put out there. So we're just hoping you go back on the ski boats to the 150 feet and get rid of the latuary. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shale Wilder, and my wife and I live on Drayton Harbor where we are avid kayakers. We were not able to attend the October 8th public hearing on the no-shooting zone in Drayton Harbor, but we did provide a written memorandum in advance, and hopefully you had an opportunity to review it. And if you didn't, I would encourage you to do that. We were able, however, to view the entire video of the hearing, and there were a number of comments and observations made that we felt require clarification. Some attempts were made to trivialize or marginalize all of the complaints by characterizing them only as related to noise. I can tell you in the strongest possible terms that for many of us and many of our neighbors, the noise issue is irrelevant. It is, was, and always will be about safety, safety, safety. Officer Valentine said that he had not verified complaint about a safety issue. And by verified, I assume what he meant was one that he was able to physically attend and confirm. That doesn't surprise me. We ourselves twice called the Department of Fish and Wildlife Services, Mr. Valentine's colleague, and the Blaine Police Department to report safety-related concerns. In one case, a shooting very close to two manned kayaks, and in another instance, a shooting very close to the shore. In one instance, the officer said that he was nowhere near the area and could not respond. And in the second instance, no one ever returned our voicemail. There has been no death or injury yet, was another argument. But isn't that the very point? We're extremely concerned about the safety issue and asking the council to be proactive in helping to avoid the very kind of tragedy that we all want to avoid. In the city we used to live in, there was an uncontrolled intersection. Many of the residents complained for years to the city about that intersection, but they didn't have data on past injuries and death, et cetera, that would support a traffic control device. One day, a mother and her two children, one in a stroller and one walking with her, were going through that intersection. A young man plowed through it. He ended up killing the mother and one child. The child in the stroller survived. And now there's a traffic light at that intersection. I'm sure that's something we all want to avoid. Hunters always follow the rules, we were told. I spoke to the Department of Fish and Wildlife. They only have 140 officers of enforcement for the entire state of Washington. And I'm trying to get information on the number of citations and infractions they issue, but I can tell you the number in the hundreds or thousands. I'm sure that most hunters are careful and law-abiding, but it's not those people that we have to be concerned about. The bottom line is public safety and welfare must take priority over all else. The city of Blaine is telling you they're concerned about safety. The local police department is telling you they're concerned about safety. Many local residents who actually live on the harbor day to day are telling you we're concerned about safety. None of us wants to be here a year or two from now facing a tragedy when we had an opportunity to do something about it. Please, please, do not ignore these safety concerns. Help us keep our community safe. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Lori Henley. I live on Lake Samish between Calmar Cove and Chalashore. My husband and I have lived there for over 30 years. We've raised three daughters. Over the years, our lake activities have changed dramatically. With a young family, we were out there a lot. Tubing, fishing derbies, teaching the kids to ski, wakeboard, all that. Went through a jet ski period. And for many years, I water skied and used the ski course daily. You know, in recent years, our overall usage of the lake has changed. Life changes. But I look out and I still see a lot of people using the lake, just like we did when we had the younger family. You know, but there's still people out there. The row team, young families with tubers, wakeboards, paddleboards. We're using the lake, different cycles, different seasons of our lives. Kids are grown, they've moved away, but they still love coming home. We still love living on the lake and utilizing it for the lifestyle that we all bought into many years ago. I've seen a lot of changes with the weather. I've seen, I've had two feet of water under my house when the lake level is really high. I've had my first piling completely out of water when it's really low. Most of that's maintained with the monitoring of the dam at Friday Creek. So most of that's maintained. But I mean, that has to play in with the level of the erosion and all that. Most severe weather I've, you know, seen, or the most docking to rocking of the dock happens with the severe weather in the winter, the white caps and all that. That's the worst dock movement I've seen in all my years living there, more so than any of the wakeboard boats or the ski boats, with the exception of maybe the Fourth of July parade, one day for one hour when the boats cruise by, which that's a great tradition. Don't want to see that go away. I just feel like, living on the lake, there's a lot of upkeeps and maintenance, docks and beaches. Things happen. You have to take care of that. So, you know, that's the same as having a house. to take care of that. So, you know, that's the same as having a house. You know, it's, it just maintenance. You gotta, you get it all set and perfect, and then you gotta kind of start over. The ordinance that was passed back in June, changing the wake, no wake zone to three hundred feet, dramatically moving the no wake zone, it just seems, out to twenty-seven hundred feet, just seems like it was a big blunder. It should be fixed. Most of us feel like-
Thirty seconds, please.
Most of us feel like we were wronged, and that, that was like maybe two or three percent of the people wanted that change. The majority of people don't. I just feel like the council needs to pass the new ordinance, changing the wake zone back to one hundred and fifty feet for the ski boats, and move the buoys back to about eight hundred feet from the bridge, to where it's safe for everyone to utilize the lake, kids and everyone alike, just to use it like we've been using. Thank you.
Good evening, council, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Jared Greenwood, and I'd like to speak about the Lake Samish, about Lake Samish, or as I call it, a little slice of paradise. I'll be brief, as I'm not a homeowner on Lake Samish, but I have rented a house on the water for two years and three months in the Calmore Cove area, which is the southwest cove. I'm a local educator, and I feel I can bring a neutral view on this topic, as I do not own a boat or property. I see this topic as one that can greatly affect the local economy, including local jobs and education. Currently, I have many students that use the lake for fishing and recreational purposes. This recreational opportunity has allowed great learning to take place in my engineering and aerospace manufacturing class. Students are able to take their learning from the classroom to take to the lake with composite engineering. I feel like this ordinance can have a great negative effect on our youth. I have witnessed most boaters acting with lake etiquette, which allows us to police ourselves, and I feel like the local community does that. I feel with recent positive changes in local community committees, like the Lake Samish Association, the support of neighbors policing each other, continued boater education, we can keep all people happy on the lake, and we can take care of the issues ourselves without passing this new ordinance. We can accomplish this with extra effort with our community members, which many are in attendance tonight, to continue to educate our boaters with etiquette and respect for all property and people on the lake, to allow Lake Samish to be that little piece of paradise for everybody. Thank you for your time.
Oh, Paul Jostens again, Lake Samish. Sorry, missed this afternoon's meeting. I was flying back from Arizona. And yes, the weather was much nicer over there. Anyways, again, reiterating it, I guess I'm a little bit frustrated to find out that it's still got held up in committee. I realize you guys are doing your best to do a thorough job on this. I just feel like this ordinance is kind of being punished because that wasn't done at the, the first off. I mean, I just feel a little bit like that one just kind of went through, and now this one's getting pulled apart, even though it's what the majority of people support. So I'm here supporting this new compromise ordinance, most of all for, for the people who live around the lake, but also for the, all of the people who recreate on Lake Samish. I think it's important that we do police the lake, but since we have a smaller sheriff presence, I don't see that as an issue. I see that as a communication issue, where we as neighbors and the Lake Samish Association have to communicate with each other. And so, you know, I've heard people complaining about somebody getting too close to a dock. That is breaking the law, and that needs to be dealt with, with the sheriff, or inside the neighborhood, at least, at least inside the neighborhood with us talking to that individual. And we'd like to be allowed to do that. And I feel we have not been doing that, but we're going to do that moving forward. And I'd like to see this new compromise ordinance go through. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Walker, and I live on Lake Samish. Without losing our initial focus on compromise, I'd like to stay focused on three issues. Number one, the no wake zone, which was moved from its original location to twenty-seven hundred feet from the bridge, needs to be moved back to the compromised location of roughly eight hundred feet from the bridge. This location has a tangible rationale, and will be located where three hundred feet from one shore meets three hundred, three hundred feet from the other roughly. It's rational, it makes sense, and it serves the needs of all the lake residents, not just those few that brought forth the original ordinance in June fourth. Number two, as a result of the June fourth ordinance, the no wake zone for all boats was arbitrarily moved from one hundred and fifty feet to three hundred feet, without regard to sport or physics of the wakes that are created. We're asking that all boats, aside from those engaged in wake sports, be moved back to the one hundred and fifty mark. There's no reason to have ski and fishing boats limited to a three hundred foot from shore location. Safety has been cited as the number one reason to distribute watercraft in a better way on Lake Samish. The representative from Watcom County Sheriff's Office this afternoon stated today that no bodily injury accidents that he could remember had been recorded in the last ten years, and beyond that even. That changed this summer when congestion, as a result of the new ordinance, caused an evasive maneuver on the part of tow boats, or of two different boats, and a broken leg was the result. Sorry, Dave, I'm calling you out. So we had Dave here today in his cast, and that's a direct result of the, moving the congestion into the center of the lake. Please allow the boaters to, to utilize more of the lake in a safe manner. Number three, those boats that are engaging in surf activities have been moved as of June fourth to three hundred feet at the request of Becky O'Brien, James Wilson, and their small self-interest group. In the spirit of compromise, we are willing to agree to leave that zone as is. This has been the result of a grassroots effort on the part of all Lake Samish residents. Leaving the surf activities at a minimum of three hundred feet satisfies the request of the initial ordinance, and it's agreeable to the substantial portion of all of the residents. Three hundred feet also goes above and beyond the current studies, which include the WSIA two thousand and fifteen study that was quoted today. I would, it recommends two hundred feet as a minimum for a no wake zone. I would urge the council to take advantage of the education resources, the signage and the online resources that the WSIA has offered at no cost to the county. Those are great resources, and they're free for the taking. Thank you for respecting and considering approval of the four seven nine four eight oh compromise ordinance. Thank you very much.
Max Perry, Watcom County. Just, just thinking and listening to your, your two things on the, the water efficiency that you commented on today, or were asked of you today, that Watcom County really needs a, a comprehensive online site for all things water, because we're, we're spending thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars in various, various groups on it. You have a, a management team, you have a water supply group, you have a PUD that's using drought contingency and, and water banking, looking at water banking. Here you had Gary today, talking about, we want to get into water banking here for the county. You have a planning unit. We have a watershed management board. And we're spending a lot of dollars, you, we, we call it grant dollars, but it's, government doesn't have, earning money is, is tax money that's reformed and grouped together and put out in, in, in what you call grants. So it's, it's, it's free money to you, but not to us. So we need a, a one, a one-stop onsite, comprehensive site, online site, for all things water in the county, so that you guys can keep track of things, can keep track of costs, see when things are being duplicated, and used up multiple different times on. So Charles Skip Richards talked to you about a, a dashboard, which was a comprehensive, with a, with a site with, with things coming out that you want to look at, different things of water. So this is, this is what we need and what the, what the county needs. Thank you.
Mr. Alasey, and then if there's anybody else who wishes to speak, please line up.
Mr. Alasey, forty-eight twenty-five, Alson Road. I wish to thank Kathy Keven for coming up and giving you those flowers, because that gives me a chance. Kids, chocolate. You can bribe kids with chocolate. But you can't bribe adults with chocolate. Now, this lady up here has served on this council for a long while. She's worked with people, they're all different. They're like pieces of a puzzle. You know, I saw Steve Oliver tonight. He's the fellow that keeps track of all your tax money and where it goes. And Steve was in Value Village trying to get a good deal. He was buying puzzles, because he likes to take puzzles and put them together. I want you to notice, all those puzzle pieces are different. They're just like people. They're just like you kids and you people. They're different, and they fit together. They form a strong union, and that's what makes democracy work. So, Hawaiian chocolate, no, it's not a bribe, because Barbara and I have rarely, rarely agreed on anything, anytime.
Except chocolate.
They give it all to Barbara.
Oh, whoa.
Jared Greenwood again. I just wanted to, I feel like I misspoke towards the end. I just want to let you know I am in favor of opening up the lake. I only get to speak once.
I'm sorry. People only get to speak once. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
But that's what it sounded like when you spoke.
My name's Eric McHenry, Lake Samish. I just wanted to echo all the other constituents that came up today and spoke, and it does seem like it's a reasonable compromise for the whole lake. I can appreciate the fact that everybody's looking at it a little closer based on the way the June fourth ordinance went down, as well as the, the opponents to those proponents after the fact. I can understand why you want to make the right decision. But I think that really, we do need to keep in mind that the, the big boats with the big boat, the big wakes that may or may not be causing any erosion or property damage are still going to be in the same place. And it's not fair to alienate everybody else who's doing other sports and create an unsafe environment on the lake. There hasn't been accidents. That was stated today by an expert. I wish that one of you would have asked the policeman, if we were to have more concentrated boat activity and, and recreation activity in a smaller part of the lake, would that be less safe? Because I think you would have got the answer that we've been trying to promote, that that is the fact. That's what the residents have seen since the ordinance was, was passed. I do realize that it's only minimal times on the lake that it happens, because it's really only minimal times that there's a bunch of boats or activity on the lake. It is a gem, as other people have spoken, and that is true to fact. I wish you all to come out and enjoy and partake, and then you will know. But thank God, most people in the county go to Lake Watcom and don't come that far south. So, but the, we have an open invite, I'm sure, from anybody here, if you guys would like to partake. And I can, I can appreciate the due diligence. I wish it was done in the first ordinance prior to it passing. It does feel like we're being punished for things that we did not create. That being said, please look at it hard, but keep in mind that realistically, those boats, the so-called causing that problem are in the same place. It's just a matter of, it's being opened up for everybody else to enjoy. And it's, it is not fair for-
Thirty seconds, please.
Certain few to partake in a, a different environment than, than others. So, thank you very much.
Again, if there's no one else after these two people, then we'll be closing the open public session.
Carol Perry, Watcom County. This morning, or midday, at your Finance and Administration Committee meeting, you were discussing water use efficiency. And I hate to be a broken record, but here was another opportunity for you to see how the process, the water process, how things get done in the county is broken. And you have an opportunity to fix it. You need, you need a body where there's all the stakeholders. I know that Barbara, or Councilman Brenner, takes a beating here because she comes back again and again and says, all the stakeholders need to be at the table. They really do. Sixty ninety-one exposed the broken process. The water supply plan, no one has ever vetted that. That hasn't come to the planning unit. The drought contingency plan, seven hundred thousand dollars for a drought plan. Max and I go to the PUD meetings, too. So we've been aware of how that's come through, and it hasn't come through being vetted by all the stakeholders. In fact, I asked, well, that's another, I won't go there. But anyway, watching you this morning, I could see you were close to seeing. Here's another example. The five-year plan, you said, some of you said, what about the council? What about the council's thoughts on water? Not only do you need the planning unit and all the stakeholders, the tribes and all, you, you need that consensus to make decisions, because water is such a huge thing. When you wanted your thoughts about water, it didn't get done. The service water was canceled. It, it just didn't get done. So the communication between the stakeholders and you, you've got some good committees that are functioning now, and you're getting that input from everyone. There's a meeting tomorrow night at the planning unit.
Thirty seconds, please.
Someone gave me a, a thought today that I thought was amazing. They said, change the name of the planning unit. Not one person in a thousand in this county knows that there's a place where they can come and have their interest in water represented. And, and there's some caucuses. There needs to be some work done, and you can, you can cause it to happen. And there's places in, there's people in this administration that don't want stakeholders. They don't want to hear us. So stick with it. Find out. And I appreciate Councilman Frazee has come, and, and several of you have come to the planning unit meetings and really tried to find out what's going on. So thank you for taking time, and you have the power, and you have the responsibility to head up water resources in this county. Thank you.
Hey, you're the next one. Ma'am?
Ella. Yep. Knock in there in front of him, I thought. Okay, my name is Janet Monks. I'm a resident of Lake Samish, and I'm here in support of the ordinance that, the compromise ordinance ending four eighty. I appreciated coming to the meeting today and hearing your thoughts and, and hearing from the staff members that you brought in. I hope you got the answers that you were looking for, and it helps you to make the decision to pass the ordinance. It's a compromise ordinance, and I, I believe it's very fair. The sheriff had mentioned that there's really no difference going, there's really going to be no difference in patrolling whether you have the, the old way, the ordinance that passed, or the compromise ordinance. It's just going to be the same. What you didn't ask the sheriff was, I think today, was what it would be like if you're cramming all those boats into a smaller space. He might have had an opinion on that being, affecting the safety record of Lake Samish boating. As he had mentioned, it's been a very safe boating environment out there for a very long time, very safe environment. The park staff had mentioned that there were no issues that I heard today regarding erosion or safety. I think it was Public Works who had mentioned that there were no erosion issues to report. And I might be getting the people wrong, but the planning gentleman that was up here talking about boat waves and erosion, I don't know if he was citing actual studies or if they were more anecdotal, but I don't think you can take a Chesapeake Peak Bay study and apply it to Lake Samish. It has its own different environmental factors. So I'm hoping that you will, and that was not used when you passed the original ordinance, that kind of a study or that kind of- that kind of a study or that kind of information, looking at all of the facts. I hope that we can put, move forward and pass this compromise ordinance and bring our community together so that we can work on some of the real issues and some of the issues that, regarding the environment, natural setbacks and erosions, erosion, the things that wind and rain and runoff and occur around there. Those are the things that we can really actively work on and
Thirty seconds, please.
Boat waves are very insignificant. It's a very short period of time that boats are on the lake. Most of the issues are occurring over the winter. And, sorry about that. I wrote a whole thing, didn't want to read it. But I just, I'm in support of the ordinance, and I hope that you can find your way to bring it to the county council and vote to pass it. It is a very fair compromise proposal. A lot of people have worked very hard on it. Most of the residents are standing behind it and willing to work with all of the neighbors to come up with a great plan and work together as a community.
And then after these two gentlemen, if I have no one else, I'll be closing the session.
Thank you for listening to our comments. I live on Lake Samish. I moved there at great cost to our families. We love to recreate on Lake Samish as a family and with friends. As a result of the June 4th county council meeting, the no-wake zone was just subjectively moved 2,700 feet back from the bridge, taking away a significant portion of what we can recreate on Lake Samish. There was no studies that were done on Lake Samish to prove soil erosion or safety. It was just subjectively done. A few landowners now don't have motors or boats in front of their house, which I'm sure benefits them, but for the rest of us, it was not something that we chose. We moved to Lake Samish so that we could have fun with our family on that lake as it was already constituted. And I wonder if any of you on the council might enjoy parts of Wacome County, like skiing at Mount Baker, or biking on Galbraith, or just riding your bike around town. If anyone was just to subjectively come and say, "Hey, Galbraith, it's dangerous," and took that away from you, I just wonder how you'd feel about that, or cited some non-existent studies about soil erosion on cars driving to the ski area. You just can't take something away from us like this without peer-reviewed, scientifically-studied, objective evidence, not just some anecdotal thing and people coming here today and talking about Chesapeake Bay and Lake Michigan. There are waves all the time on Lake Samish, just as much as a water ski or a fishing boat wake when the wind comes up every week. There's a very few days every year when those wake surf boats get on the lake. I don't own one. A very, very few. As you see, we have pretty dismal weather here. And it's most of the year, there's no one even on that lake with a boat. There still are waves from wind. And I just am very much in favor of the compromise ordinance to go back to where it was before. Thank you. Tim Slusk.
Graham Robbins, Shallow Shore Road, Lake Samish. Not so much here to speak for the compromise ordinance. I do support it 100%. I'm a little upset that, I've been on the lake for 43 years, and I've never seen such a mess. And I'm concerned that council made some moves, sweeping moves, based on bad information from people complaining about docks damage, non-conforming docks. A conforming dock is four feet wide, 40 feet long, three feet off the water, has steel pilings, and flow-through decking. No amount of wake's going to damage that, yet you made a move on that. From this mess came talk about bans or partial bans on boats. I want to remind council that Washington State ranks 18th on spending on recreational boating. $6.9 billion in Washington, 22,872 jobs, 1433 businesses. District 1, $586 million, 2,302 jobs, 119 businesses. District 2, $77 million, 3597 jobs, 309 businesses. District 3, $496 million, 1554 jobs, 66 businesses. District 4, $364 million, 1209 businesses, 41, sorry, 1209 jobs, 41 businesses. District 5, $542 million, 1659 jobs, 69 businesses. Just want to remind you, it's very big business. Done some lots of research and see that generally, any changes to any of the root regulations on the state lakes is done by the state, not the county. And even any county or any state that I've seen is very protective of their boating industry. It's very valuable to them, and they recognize and acknowledge that. Thank you.
And seeing no one else, we will close the public session. Next up is the Consent Agenda. Mr. Sidhu.
All right. There were five items on the consent agenda, and they all received 3-0 vote, and I saw move for approval.
Been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 6 to 0 with Mr. Bird out of the room.
Got a lot of feedback.
Criminal Justice, Mr. Buchanan. You're up.
Yeah, if you're up. Okay. Today, we had an item on for consideration for tonight. It was a resolution establishing a stakeholder advisory committee for the Public Health, Safety, and Justice Facility Needs Assessment. We decided to hold off on voting on that. We're going to ask some questions of the small cities about representation on our stakeholder advisory committee and come back in probably four weeks to discuss it again.
All right. Thank you. Back to Finance, Mr. Sidhu.
Finance. The next item is AB 2019-520. Request council approve the Criminal Justice Treatment Account Plan Update, 2019-2020. This received 3-0 vote in the committee, and I saw move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 6 to 0 with Mr. Bird absent.
The next item is AB 2019-512. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into an inter-local agreement between Wacome County and Wacome Conservation District to develop a water use efficiency program for agricultural water users in the amount of $20,000, council acting as Wacome County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. This received 3-0 vote in the committee, and I saw move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm not pleased with how this, how this process happened. I feel like this is something that definitely should have gone to the planning unit. I do believe, though, that the Conservation District got an earful today and will, will be more helpful than those who've been ignoring the planning unit have been. And the fact that at least it's about agricultural, agricultural water users, and they actually reached out to the Agricultural Caucus from the planning unit. So, that's something. It's not much, but it's something. So, I'm actually going to support this.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 6-0. Next item up is, oh, sorry, Mr. Sidhu.
Okay. Next item is AB 2019-513. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into an inter-local agreement between Wacome County and Wacome Conservation District to develop a water use efficiency program for domestic and municipal water users in the amount of $14,250, council acting as Wacome County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. This also received 3-0 vote in the committee, and I saw move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, this one I feel even stronger about, and I'm not going to support it. To set up, to move ahead with something like this that is supposed to be for domestic users, is so disrespectful to the well owners, who are a caucus, by the way, of the planning unit, and to the non-municipal water associations, that they didn't even deal with those, with the, with the Well Users Caucus. And by the way, well users and the non-municipal water associations are a huge percentage out in the county of those who are water users. And they do have a place on the, on the planning unit. And since they were so careful to say on Ag that they worked with the Ag Caucus, it seems very intentional that they didn't work with the well, well users, well owners caucus on the planning unit. And this is, I do think that the Conservation District will do a better job. They couldn't do a worse job than what's been happening to these people who've been left out. But, so, I'm not, but I'm not supporting this. I think this should be to at least show a little teeny bit of respect for the little guys in all this, although there's lots of them. This should, this should be tabled and sent to the planning unit for discussion and a vote before we would even do this, so I'm not supporting it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes 6 to 1 with Brenner opposed.
The next item is AB 2019-522. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into Amendment Number 2 of Herrera Environmental Consultants Contract for Services to Support Lower Nuksek River Flood Plane Integrated Planning, county, council acting as Wacome County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7 to 0.
Next item is AB 2019-508. Ordinance amending the 2019 Wacome County Budget Request Number 13 in the amount of $375,570. This also received 3-0 vote in the council, in the committee, and I saw move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It's an ordinance.
This is an ordinance.
Sorry, 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 my apologies. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Aye.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidhu?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Affirmative.
Thank you.
Oh, you guys.
Why do you say aye on resolutions and yes on ordinances?
So, we feel like a pirate?
I'm going to mix it up.
Okay. The next item is AB 2019-534. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into an inter-local agreement between Wacome County and Washington State Office of Financial Management in the amount not to exceed $60,000 for the purpose of expanding outreach in our community for the 2020 census. This also received 3-0 vote in the committee, and I saw move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Next item up is a resolution supporting the renaming of Squaw Creek to Patstel Creek. And was there any staff report or any comments? Anybody wish to make a comment on this?
I want to make one statement.
Frazee.
I just want to make one statement that the Nuksek tribe did ask us to change this because squaw is not a good term for Native American women. So, they wanted to change it back to the original or the place that was there, the, yeah. They wanted this name instead.
I concur on that, and I fully support it. Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, I support it too, but there was also a request from whatever the geographic name board, so they needed this by, it's kind of time-sensitive, the email that we received, I think by the 29th. So, I'm just hoping that, that this will get transmitted as quick as possible because they're having a meeting about the name change.
Madam Clerk is nodding vigorously. Yes, good. Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Next item up is a resolution establishing county council meeting dates for 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
Go move.
Mr. Buchanan moves, and Mr. Sidhu, was it seconds?
I wonder what Barbara's going to say. Wonder what Barbara's going to say.
Brenner.
Yeah, I've never supported the meeting dates because I feel like we used to have them every week, a full day and evening, and we've, we're getting more and more stuff than we even ever used to have. But since I won't be on the council, I'm not going to vote either way. I'll just abstain.
I agree with you, though.
Oh, well, thank you.
I disagree with you. All right. Further discussion? Seeing
You don't have anything to do on Tuesday.
It looks like, it looks like the staff
You want to miss vote?
Staff in the, in the cheap seats are yelling, "Bad idea." All right. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining.
Abstain.
All right. That passes 6 to 0 with Ms. Brenner abstaining. Next item up is council appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Appointments to two vacancies to the Horticultural Pest and Disease Board applicants, Andrew Taylor and Diana Bedlington, committee controls and prevents the spread of agricultural pests and diseases.
Move to appoint?
Second.
Point or confirm on this one?
Appoint.
Appoint, okay.
Mr. Donovan moves to appoint Mr. Buchanan. Seconds. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. All right. Introduction items. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Brenner moves approval. Any discussion?
Second.
Sorry, sorry, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What?
Yes.
Oh, jeez.
Todd's trying to push his pack.
When's your turn? Your turn up, Mr. Donovan?
I want to know why it's my here.
All right. Any opposed? Any variation to the word opposed? Seeing none, that passes 7-0. Okay. Next item up is committee reports, National Resources.
National Resources had two great presentations today. We didn't do any, any votes on anything, but the first was a presentation from staff on the Shelter Protection District and the work that the Pollution Identification and Control Program has been doing for 20 years in opening up shellfish beds with clean water, and we're looking for another 20 years of that. We also had an update on the flood plane integrating planning processes. We had both pick and flip on the agenda. And we got an update on the, the grant funding available for expanding the flood plane planning process. That's what we did at 9:30 in the morning.
Thank you, Mr. Sidhu. Anything else on Finance?
Yes, we had a presentation from Wacome Dispute Resolution Center. I think that was clearly, they make a real difference in, in avoiding so many things which can go to the court that they're able to do it outside the court and save us over half a million dollars to, to get those things resolved. And they are expanding and offering services. I think it was a great service they are doing, and I really like their Peace Builder Award, which is, they sent us invitation November 15. I would like people to attend that.
Thank you. Public Works.
We had a discussion of the Wacome County Health Department Syringe Services Program expansion, which would be to have a van. They've been renting a van, leasing or renting, whatever. And this would be for the county to have its own van. They're doing more outreach, and I think they're doing a great job. I'm really pleased that they're doing this because they showed, you know, she, she spoke about it, but one of the most important points that came through to me is that by having this, more people actually do consider changing what they're doing and getting help to, to change what's happening to them. So, I think it's, I, this gives me hope.
Right. Criminal Justice?
We had two presentations, one by District Court Administrator Bruce Van Glupt. He talked to us about an update on district court and probation, also on electronic home monitoring, and the Domestic Violence Offender Treatment Program. We also had a presentation by Superior Court Administrator and Court Clerk, Dave Reynolds. He talked to us about the, the functions of the court and the functions of the clerk. And there was a lot we didn't know about the clerk, I think, that we learned today, so.
Thank you. Planning and Development?
We had a presentation from planning, and then we discussed the Lake Wacome ordinance again as well, and had reports from staff answering questions. Or Lake Samish. Yep. That's all I got.
Other items? And so, we didn't have anything else we have to vote on, do we not? Council member update, it's Mr. Buchanan. Frazi.
I just want to say happy anniversary.
Thank you. Thirty-one years.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Donovan.
I actually want to back up to my committee update. I just want to give a shout out to the work that was done to clean up Drayton Harbor and Portage Bay and the Lauter Scudan takes a ton of citizen advisory committee volunteer hours. And I just want to thank everybody working for that. I didn't get that in my committee report, so.
Ms. Brenner. Mr. Bird.
It was great to have the library here tonight, and I hope you all have library cards. Said, "I hope you all have library cards." It would be nice to have them here tonight.
Yes. Nothing to the ports.
I have a library card, not only for myself, but I also have a Wacom County library card for my granddaughter.
So, are we going to be adjourned? You guys can compare your library cards.
Brenner, it was my council member update.
Oh, that was. Oh, I thought you already did yours.
Anyway, so, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.